Thanks to join us.
Good morning Wichita, and thank you all of you for joining us at this city council meeting. We will call this meeting to order. With us today is Pastor Donna Goldtree with Saint Paul's United Methodist Church to provide our invocation. Following that invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance and we ask you to please stand for both.
Please be in an attitude of meditation and silence with me. Holy God, we give thanks for the Wichita City Council that is gathering here today to preside over the business of this city. May they weigh the matters before them and decide according to the needs of the city and its residents. We are grateful for the summer days and for the rain that has come, but we do lift a prayer for our brothers and sisters who are picking up the pieces from the wind and the flooding here and in the upper Midwest through the Caribbean. Those who have been devastated by Hurricane Burl, already devastated, and those who will be given its waning days, its waning times of difficulty, please be with them all, Lord. It reminds us, Lord, of how important infrastructure is as so many in the Houston area are without it today. We are grateful for the past week when we celebrated the freedom in our land. Keep us mindful that this freedom depends on the strength of our democracy, whether it is here at the local level or in all levels throughout our country. Give each branch of government wisdom and give them empowerment to do their part on behalf of the citizens and residents, setting aside personal gain, and continue to empower our staff here to provide the support needed for guiding the council. We pray that the city's efforts of balancing and responding to the needs of all of our residents are in the forefronts of their mind, and we are grateful for the efforts that they are making for the least fortunate among us. Oh, please, guide this city council as it strives for decisions that create excellence in Wichita as a place to live, work, and play. This is our request, so be it.
And?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much Pastor Goldtree. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 2nd, 2024.
Are there any corrections or changes? I see none. I approve the minutes for the meeting on July 2nd, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Proclamations. Today we have Wichita Wheathawks Day.
May please ask the Wichita Wheathawks to join me at the front.
Thank you for joining us this morning. This proclamation reads, "The city of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the Wichita Wheathawks men's soccer team was founded in 1974, and have maintained 50 years of continued activity encompassing over 400 players and one of the five oldest men's amateur programs in the 13-state Midwest region of the United States Adult Soccer Organization. The Wichita Wheathawks alumni have been founding members of Wichita-area youth, high school, college, and adult soccer programs and referee programs that actively promote and support the sport of soccer to the Wichita community. The Wichita Wheathawks tradition of success in 50 years led to over 650 wins, more than 30 Kansas Soccer League season and tournament championships, and 12 regional tournament championships. The Wichita Wheathawks alumni have been members of the professional soccer organization in the city of Wichita. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Lily Wu, Mayor of the city of Wichita, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim July 13th, 2024, as Wichita Wheathawks Day in the city of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the Wichita Wheathawks for their contribution to our community."
Hi, I'm Matt Knablock, one of the founding members of the Wichita Wheathawks, and with me is Kevin Heims, President of our club. We would like to thank Mayor Lily Wu and all the city council members for this great honor. We started the team in 1974 with the goal to be the best amateur adult soccer team in the region and to grow the sport of soccer in Wichita. At the time, there were only a few soccer fields in the city and very limited organization. Since then, our Wheathawk team members took a leadership role in helping organize adult and youth soccer organizations in Wichita like the Kansas Soccer League, AYSO, KJSF, the Wichita High School League, the Friends University Soccer Program, the Wichita State Club Program, and the Yusuf Local Referee Program. We are very proud of our accomplishments on the field over the 50 years, winning more than 650 games, over 40 Striker Kansas Soccer League and Regional Tournament Championships, six Kansas Cup Championships, and three state championships. However, we are most proud of helping soccer become one of the major youth and adult participation sports in Wichita. We accomplished both goals we set for ourselves in 1974. Thank you for your recognition today, and we are proud to be Wichitaans. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Public agenda, Clarabelle Gutierrez Ramirez, Photo Voice Project.
According to Tobacco-Free Wichita, 23.6% of high school and 6.7 of middle school students currently report using tobacco. Because of this, I've decided to become part of Photo Voice, a group of youth here in Wichita, Kansas, who are advocating for the reduction of storefront ads. We are doing this by presenting our ideas and point of view to the community in how we have seen people being affected by tobacco. That is why Photo Voice is partnering with Tobacco-Free Wichita to drastically reduce the amount of storefront ads promoting tobacco products. The colorful ads currently used to promote tobacco can easily be influential to the youth of Wichita and influence them to start to use the products. If you look at the picture on top, if you, you'd be surprised that that is a vape ad. On the left, you'd see a box, on the bottom, you'd see a box of candies. Look at how similar those two are. Looking at both, you can see both have bright colors such as red, green, yellow, which is commonly used in candy advertisements aimed towards kids. Most of the candies in each of the advertisements are very similar. They have various types of gummies in each advertisement. Smoking use is starting to affect school life and the productivity of children in these environments. At Wichita Northwest, we have had to put up gates blocking the entrance of the commons restrooms, then having to lock up the doors to the others to handle the smoking issues within our school. There has even been a period in our school that teachers had to physically stand in restrooms to stop students from attempting to smoke. If you, as it stands, when the school year ended, out of six restrooms in the school, we could only use one-third of them, all in attempt to reduce student smoking. Some people might think the ability to advertise is protected by the First Amendment of the Constitution, freedom of speech. While that is not incorrect, the right to advertise does fall under the freedom of speech. However, the freedom of speech does not protect speech which is used to harm others. The right to advertise, like what you have in front of you, should be drastically reduced because of the harm it brings to youth within our communities. Storefront ads are not only dangerous but harmful to the youth of Wichita. It could influence youth, it could influence youth to start smoking. Storefront ads are dangerous. Would you want to see your child smoking? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tunnel.
Thank you. Thank you, Clarabelle, for being here today. I really want to applaud you for your courage and for taking your time to come here. I'm also a proud member of Tobacco-Free Wichita, and I've been working on this issue with them as well. I've been working in tobacco prevention and cessation for 30 years, and I've never spoken as well as you have today. So, thank you for what you're doing and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to say thank you for being here as well. At your age, I definitely would not stand up in front of the city council and say anything, so want to definitely honor that with you. I did have a question, though. Would you say, I didn't know what you, I didn't know about the data that you shared about Northwest. Would you say there are a lot of your peers that are actually addicted to some of the vaping stuff?
Yes, I would say to the point where they have to hide it in the restroom. Like you, you have, you go into the restrooms and that's all you see, and it reeks in the restrooms and it interrupts daily stuff because people will physically sit during classes to go vape.
Man, I hate to hear that. I do thank you, though, for speaking up and trying to do something about it. I do agree with you. A lot of these products are very attractive to young folks and kind of makes them interested in it, and then when you smell it. I know some young people who smelled it once and wanted to try it. Again, I appreciate your advocacy on this and want to encourage you to keep it up. There's going to be some folks that don't agree with you and try to push back, but just keep fighting and that change will come. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Clarabelle. I know that Councilmember Glasscock and I visited the photo video and presentation that you did at Riverside, and we really appreciate, again, not just you, but your peers as part of the mayor chief council for advocating for a tobacco-free community. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Consent agenda items one through 16.
Are there any changes? I see none. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Board of Bids and Contracts, dated July 8th, 2024.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Josh Slaver, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids and Contracts convened July 8th, 2024, for the following items. For engineering, we have the LW CLAP Master Plan Implementation for Conco Incorporated, DBA Conco Construction for an aggregate bid total of $2,306,296. We have the K9 Rooster Dog Park Enhancements for Conco Incorporated, DBA Conco Construction for Group One in the amount of $563,295.15, subject to approval of a new engineer's estimate and budget authorization. For purchasing, we have ammunition 9mm and .223 caliper rejecting all bids. We have the ammunition 9mm and .223 caliper recommending the State of Kansas contract for the three vendors listed and the rates listed. This will be for a term of March 7th, 2024 through February 31st, 2029, with two additional 24-month periods. We have Root Control Herbicide, rejecting all bids. This is how to become a vendor with the city. These are open request proposals out on the street today, and I'd be happy to try to answer your questions. I recommend your approval.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Josh, just a quick question on the ammo. It looked to be a five-year contract, the two additional 24-month periods, would that be renewal that comes to council or automatic renewal?
If approved today, it would authorize us to renew them at the end of the term, 2024 to 2029, with two additional two years.
Okay, so that could go to 2033?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions?
I do have one. There were two slides with rejection of bids. Can you remind the community about the reasons behind rejections of bids and why we have this open process and maybe just keep it on the bids available right now?
Okay. Great question. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The reason that purchasing will have rejection of bids is you'll have instances of an engineer's estimate exceeding where we're not amendable to moving that price, and we want to go back out to modify a scope possibly. In today's specific instance, you had the ammunition. We actually completed a bid process, but we took the extra step to look at a possible cooperative, and we found a roughly $10,000 savings by using a cooperative from a different agency with larger volumes. So shout out to our requesting department. Thank you for working with us through a few weeks on that. We saved them a couple thousand on that. Specifically, the Root Herbicide, the issue with that was the bid came in roughly $400,000 over the budget for the department, so we're currently evaluating alternatives to see if we want to use a different product or if there can be some sort of change made that would allow it to be feasible.
Thank you, Josh. I will move to approve the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Petitions for public improvements.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Paul Gunson, Public Works and Utilities, for the record. This morning, I have one revised petition for your consideration. Signatures on the petitions represent 100% of the improvement district, and the petitions are valid per Kansas statute. Pine Way Addition located in District 5, on June 4th, 2024, the city council approved drainage and sewer petitions for Pine Way Addition. The developer has submitted revised petitions for stormwater drain and sanitary sewer improvements with revised budgets to reflect the current market conditions and cover the cost of a private bid. It is recommended that the city council approve the revised petitions and budgets, adopt the amending resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures, and I will stand for questions.
This item resides in Councilmember Johnson's district.
Okay, I will move to approve the revised petitions and budgets, adopt the amending resolutions, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Authorizing funding of a project downtown master plan update.
Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, Troy Anderson, Assistant City Manager. So, back in 2010, city council approved Project Downtown, the master plan for Wichita. Since then, that plan has been the impetus for more than $1.7 billion being invested in our downtown. It's also resulted in over $760 million that is currently in the pipeline for future investment. Our residential base in downtown has more than doubled, and we have seen considerable growth in other industry sectors such as office and hospitality. In addition to that, we've seen a number of community spaces that have been created, and unfortunately, that plan only had a 15-year outlook, and so an update is currently needed. The estimated cost of an update to that plan is about $400,000. Currently, more than $300,000 has been raised privately. Additionally, the county has made a commitment to invest $50,000, and before you today is a request to also invest $50,000 towards this update. The city's investment will be paid out of the Economic Development Fund. The law department's reviewed and approved the resolution as deformed, and it's recommended the city council approve the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. With that being said, I'd like to bring up Jeff Flure with Downtown Wichita to say a few words.
Thank you, Troy. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Jeff Flure, President of Downtown Wichita, 505 East Douglas Avenue. Also want to recognize that we have two board members here today. Joel Kelly, who is a past Chair of Downtown Wichita and is still actively engaged on that board, as well as Mark Smelsley, who is the Treasurer with AGH, also serving on that board. And I know we have several council members who also are actively engaged in what we're doing with Downtown Wichita. First of all, I just want to thank you for the long-time partnership. Our city, our region, is recognized for the partnerships between the private and public sector. With the Great Wichita Partnership, we deal a lot with prospects, and that is noted as we're talking to prospects about this community, or even those that are here that may be expanding. They love the environment that we have, and part of this is driven by we know where we want to go, and that's what planning does. That's what master plans allow us to do. It allows us to have an incredible vision that's built on market research, and part of our goal is always to unlock the unknowns. The more we do that, the private sector can step in. They understand what the market is telling them we can create as far as residential, commercial, hospitality. Also, I think it's great for the public sector because that also allows you knowledge about how do you invest in infrastructure that supports what we want to see happen in the private sector market. One of the great things is that we're seeing recognition in Forbes, national journals. In fact, the mayor will be a part of leading a delegation where we'll be talking about Wichita on a global stage at the Farmville Air Show in about 10 days. So again, it's opportunities for us to really, again, promote who we are and where we want to go, but importantly, how other individuals fit into who we want to be as we go into the future. This is also about talent. We need talent. Thankfully, we are growing as a city with industry. We're seeing a number of opportunities across the board. And so, as you begin to look at the history, if you look at 2012, which you see right now, that is where we were in '12. The reason we wanted to pull that out is that right in the middle, you'll see where there are like 1, 2, 3, and 4. That's what we call Block 1. That came about because really critical infrastructure that you built with the Block 1 garage. And just within the last couple of years, we've seen that whole block come to fruition with NICH along with the ambassador, the Kansas Leadership Center. If you go to the next slide, you'll see where we are today. Each one of those green dots is a completed project. It's projects that you can go out and experience, projects that you can touch, that the community can go out and enjoy, and you'll see that we have a couple of projects under construction, but we have a number in planning that Troy alluded to earlier. So again, driving about $1.7 billion of investment primarily by the private sector, but again, you as the city, infrastructure is really critical to unlock that, but the pipeline is now over $760 million, which is really huge. The next slide, you'll see certainly the Wichita Biomedical Campus, something that we celebrated just a few months ago in the groundbreaking. All the work that we've been doing that Troy noted about the residential, commercial, created an environment where this could be possible. When we did this plan in '09, we did not envision this campus. However, what we did envision is how do you create an environment that fosters opportunities, economic growth? One of the persons I want to note, and Bob will remember, Scott Kinnable, one of the things that you did as a city, as we were kicking off this plan in '09, you designated a downtown revitalization manager. Scott Kinnable was that individual, and that was a really critical strategic step because what that allowed us to do is to work with Scott as we worked through City Hall on infrastructure improvements, and it was incredible. Troy, with what he's doing now with the parking plant, is also serving in that capacity. So again, thank you for that investment in talent internally to help us move this forward. But again, this Wichita Biomedical Campus, the largest investment in downtown's history. The next slide will actually show you the celebration that day. Over 400 people came out. I think it was probably the largest groundbreaking I've been able to be a part of, but it was a moment of pride, I think, for this community to say, "We can do these things. We will do them well." And again, the fencing just went up around this project July 1st, so there's activity on the site. Your investment, and I see it as an investment, it wasn't a donation, it was an investment of that site by you as a council, has already been catalytic, it's already been transformative. I will tell you the conversations we're having about new companies coming in to our downtown because of that investment is numerous, and we'll hopefully be able to announce those in the coming weeks and days. So again, thank you for that investment because again, it's turning a lot of opportunities. This timeline of downtown groundbreakings is extremely impressive. It's over a half a billion dollars of projects that we're going to be having the groundbreaking on this year. Some of those have already happened. March 6th, we had Exploration Place with the new amphitheater. May 8th, the Biomedical Campus. June 27th, Exploration Place, another huge moment of opportunity there. Properties that Vantage 906 will be redeveloping a site that's been sitting dormant for 75 years will break ground this year. Ballpark, private sector development with EPC will be breaking ground this year, and certainly the Kansas African-American Museum, adaptive reuse. All these are really critical investments to drive our city forward. So, as we come before you today, we really appreciate the opportunity to present this request for your consideration. What we want to do, again, is we're not starting from ground zero. This is an update. One of the things that Downtown Wichita's board has done is we have kept market research up to date, so we'll be building on that vision of what the markets are telling us we can do. Also, I think, though, it's really important now with downtown is design. How is it we create a city that is walkable, is connected in everything that we do? We've started that, but how do we advance that? We also have the opportunity to first ring neighborhoods. You know, Councilman Holihai, I know you're doing a lot of things on South Broadway. How do we connect into that? The first ring neighborhoods between downtown and WSU. Housing affordability has to be a part of our conversation because we have students in our downtown now, more so than ever before. We have those coming into the industry for the first time with their careers. We want to make sure they have options downtown, and there's a whole ecosystem of service industry that supports this thriving engine in our downtown. So we want to make sure that we have housing affordability. So, with you today, what we'd like to do is request your investment of $50,000 into this. We have raised over $330,000 privately. As you heard Troy say, the county invested a couple of weeks ago $50,000. Our goal is to leverage that and to build upon those opportunities. And so, again, thank you for what you've done. It doesn't work without the public sector investing with the private sector, and you are doing that. So thank you for creating a city that others are taking note of. The mayor and others have been a part of some of these prospect conversations. People are recognizing the incredible asset not only of this city, but our region and state. So, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity and certainly would answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions for Jeff or staff, beginning with Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure if this is for you, Jeff, or for Troy, and thank you for sharing all of your comments. I really appreciate that. So I've been seeing a lot of different questions and maybe some confusion on some posts on Facebook. Can you explain how this is different than the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan?
Certainly. So part of a master plan process is that, and this is kind of a high elevation, if you will, so we'll be looking at how is it we drive markets. The Riverfront Legacy Master Plan was more myopic, if you will, on a defined area. And we actually learned a lot of things from that process. People have asked me the same question about, okay, how does this relate? So we've actually done a number of things where it's looking at specific sites. Some of these things move forward, some of them we pause on, because of what we're learning. And certainly, that work was helpful in that it helped us understand more clearly some of the passion, if you will, around some of the assets along the riverfront. How is it that we embrace those and go forward? So, again, you know, you have a parking plan that you've adopted. That's another initiative that will help drive a component of downtown. So again, we learn from every process. Some of them take more acceleration than others. But again, all these things will be related. That work is not for not. That's something that we learned from the community, and we'll move that forward, as far as how we look at the riverfront development in the future.
And I'm sorry if I missed it, but what does the timeline look like? Say, 12 months?
What we plan to do with the update is that we're wrapping up the capital investment, if you will, as far as getting the money to be able to do the update. Our goal is that we would, from this point forward, begin to develop the final scope of work. Our hope is that we can have an RFP, a National RFP, released in August, late August. We'll go through a selection process. We'll get that team on the ground. We will start learning from their work immediately. We did that with Project Downtown initially. At that time, the Downtown YMCA was under construction, or was actually under design development. Fairfield Inn was under development, and so we actually married the design team with those different projects. It shaped it before the plan was even done. So we'll start to see benefits. Part of our opportunity right now is with the biomedical campus. We have an illustration that defines a corridor, but we need something more definitive of, this is the biomedical corridor. This is what you begin to look at architecturally within that, so that when you're in that district, you have a clear understanding, that's where you are. And I think from design, we can do more around the governmental district, the riverfront district, south of Douglas, north of Douglas. Really, these zones are really important, so I think we'll see it work immediately. Our goal is by year end, maybe going into the first part of next year, it'll be done. We'll be back before you to approve the plan, because part of this is a 10-year vision. We've learned that things are moving so quickly that we think 10 years is probably more appropriate than 15 now. And we may even have an update in five, because of the progress we're going to see.
So you mentioned that you would start learning immediately from the team once you guys hit the ground running. Will there be any opportunity for the community to kind of follow this process along, to learn alongside you guys?
It's not going to be successful if we don't do that.
I agree.
Because I think it's important that the community can see its fingerprints on the vision of this community. At that point, they're going to own it. They're going to work toward it. And so, Councilwoman, we definitely will have community engagement. We believe in that. I think that's important for people to be able to voice their vision. You learn a lot of great things when you invite the community into a conversation.
I agree. I really appreciate helping the community feel like their voice is important and heard too, and not just a table full of people making their decisions for our city and then expecting the city to just come alongside and support. We're not going to win everybody all the time, but I appreciate including them and feeling like they have a voice in it as well. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Troy. Always want to uplift the vision of Mayor Brewer, working on downtown redevelopment and seeing that this plan has really brought to life a lot of things that even weren't envisioned back then. Definitely supportive of this, and like you and I talked on the phone, I'm really happy to hear about the first ring neighborhoods. Would definitely like to see, like we talked about, 50,000-foot level or something. It doesn't have to be as detailed, but touching on Sochi, touching on the Dunbar neighborhood, what's possible around downtown and how those neighborhoods can benefit from this as well. And when we look at housing affordability, where are some of those places that could be a highlight? I'm always thinking about the Dunbar neighborhood and just automatically folks who end up wanting a yard after living in a loft. That's a great place to go, like right there. But what's that connection to downtown? What does that look like and what opportunities right outside in that first ring are there? So I'm happy to hear you say that and looking forward to seeing what that looks like, because I think those neighborhoods can transform in a similar way this downtown has.
Yes, sir. Mayor Brewer was, he wanted to create a vision. The last master plan we'd had at that point was 20 years prior. And I'll tell you that the manager, we came in about the same time, and I think he came in in March. I came in in September '08, and Bob came in and said, well, why aren't we done with this yet? And I'm like, okay, let's go. And so Bob has been a huge advocate and incredible resource in driving what you're seeing in success with our downtown.
Can I ask you, why aren't we done with this yet?
Yeah. I'm sure that will come up at the next board meeting.
Councilmember Hoheizel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate the presentation, and I'm really interested to see what comes of it, especially pertaining to affordable housing and getting in some of the adjacent neighborhoods. I do appreciate your guys' attention to those areas and work on that as well. So, any help or tips or anything along the way, please make sure to shoot them to us.
Appreciate that.
Whatever you guys hear. I do have just one quick question for Troy. What is the status of our EcoDevo fund right now?
As far as the fund balance?
Yes, sir.
Now, I do not have that information offhand, but I can certainly get that for you and distribute that to the council.
Okay. Yeah, just figure we should get updated every once in a while on that.
Yep, absolutely.
Mayor, if I could, economic development and job creation was one of the top priorities going into this budget, and the recommended budget that'll come out next week has a recommendation of a million-dollar transfer into the Economic Development Fund to ensure that we have sufficient funding to be able to support these types of initiatives.
Well, I look forward to that conversation. Thank you, Jeff, again. Appreciate it.
I have several questions now. I'll start off with piggyback on the comment that Vice Mayor made. Specifically, I'd like to know, will there be community engagement in the previous plan? There were 12 months of community and state stakeholder engagement, specifically with this new plan.
Part of our scope of work that companies will respond to, Mayor, is that we want an implementation, we want a community engagement strategy with the process. We did that with Project Downtown, and for those who may have been engaged at the time, they were robust conversations. I mean, we had hundreds of people that took the time to participate. The team that we hired to do the work, I think the manager would attest to this, they did an incredible job of gathering information from one-on-one conversations to very large engagements. Part of this opportunity we have, honestly, is to continue to educate our community about the possibilities, the opportunities, and how do you get it done? You have a consultant team that, you hire them for a reason, and they have incredible knowledge. So we want to engage the community with that team, and that will be an expectation. The other thing is, is that I'm a firm believer that you don't hire who you believe is the best and then let them go after the plan's done. We continue to have engagement. In fact, with Project Downtown, Goody Clancy, Sarah Woodworth, Lori Volk, we still have relationships with these individuals 14 years later. And the deal is this, is that if we're not seeing what we expected to see, why not? Help us understand that. If we start to see something accelerate, how do we get more from it? So that active engagement, Mayor, is important with the community, and so we're committed to that, and we'll have a strategy that will make sure the community is very much engaged in the process as we go forward.
More specifically on the timeline?
Mm-hmm.
So if the RFP goes out in August with some legwork by the end of the year, what is the expectation that this will be?
I would say we'd be done by the first quarter. Our goal is, is that, again, we would have the RFP going out in August. You probably have about a six-week period of engagement as far as people responding to those, and then hopefully by, as we go into the fourth quarter, we have the team in place. Again, this is an update, and so part of this is going to be working with the teams to understand through their lens how much time they feel like is needed to make sure we get what we want as a deliverable. But we certainly would have it by the first quarter, and again, we're not going to wait for that final plan for it not to start shaping what we need to have as far as decisions.
Final question?
Yes, ma'am.
The community-wide survey, the results of that community-wide survey came out in January of this year.
Yes, ma'am.
And the top three things that community is asking us to focus on are crime prevention, street maintenance, and economic development.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is that piece, that third piece.
Yes, ma'am.
So specifically on economic development, can you tell us some of the challenges that we're currently facing regarding economic development, especially in the downtown area?
One of the challenges right now, and certainly you're working through that, is how is it we're addressing the homelessness in our downtown and those who need assistance? And you're taking incredible steps with the MAC. We're thrilled, as the downtown community, to see the progress that is being made on that. In fact, we want to come to the table. We understand that philanthropy will need to be a part of that equation, and so we want to proactively sit down to say, okay, what are those opportunities for the private sector to be engaged in this as you take steps forward? So I would say homelessness is one of the big things that we will hear engaged in conversations quite a bit. So thank you for the steps you're taking there. I think as we look at downtown, parking management will be, and you're taking steps toward that. How is it that we really work with the assets that we have with our infrastructure so that, you know, every surface lot, we look at a surface lot as a development site. We want something built on it. So I think one of the things working through that is how we're managing the parking. What's the cleanliness of a downtown? Again, you want people walking from Old Town to Delano without thinking about it. But you also want it to be very clean. You want it to be safe. So those are items, too, that we want to make sure we have attention to. One of the things that I failed to mention is that we do have a new executive director for downtown coming in August the 12th, Heather Schroeder. She has incredible background, actually, on all the things we've been talking about. And so we look forward to Heather joining us on August the 12th. She'll be actively engaged in this process, and as we will direct with her, this is a plan that she will think about going to bed at evening and then also waking, as she thinks about it, as she gets up in the morning. It's a 24/7 item. So again, I think the homeless item, Mayor, certainly the, how is it we're utilizing our existing infrastructure to foster development? Then also, how is it that we have a downtown that people feel extremely safe in, and it's also clean? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I see no further questions at this moment?
Yes, ma'am.
So we will open it up for public comment. Are there any individuals in the public who would like to speak on this specific matter? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just want to thank Troy and your team for your work on this, and thank you for the great presentation and answering all of our questions. Also, I want to thank our partners at the county for also contributing in this plan. Very important to make it come to fruition. Thank you to the Greater Wichita Partnership, of course, and Downtown Wichita. Thank you for the board members who are here today and spending some time with us at City Hall. Certainly appreciate your time and energy and investing in our community. It's been said that we can't cut our way into prosperity. We have to grow. The mission of the city of Wichita is to be an exceptionally well-run city, and one of those four pillars is to grow our economy. And so I'm very supportive of this. I love the revitalization that's happened in our city's core since I've been a Wichitaan. So thank you for doing that. It has been said often that a goal without a plan is just a wish. And so having a solid plan that has community engagement and can be evaluated to make sure that we're fulfilling it is vital for Wichita and for our downtown core to be what it really can be. So thank you for all of your work.
Do you know further comments? This resides a lot in Street 1.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. I would move that the City Council approve the resolution and authorize the necessary signature.
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the room. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Wichita Water Works startup and commissioning support.
Good morning, Mayor and Councilmembers. Gary Jansen, Public Works and Utilities. As we near completion of Wichita Water Works, our new water treatment plant, we are at a point to ask for your consideration today for technical support for startup and bringing the plan online in 2025. Construction is all but complete. We have started some early testing. As water becomes available this fall, we will move forward, and I'll talk about this more in just a minute, with performance testing throughout the plant. This item for your consideration today is something that we've known we needed, and I want to talk about, before we get into the details, I kind of want to talk about some of the history, about how this project developed and why we're here today, and the timing of this request, funding, all that type of stuff. So I want to head on some of that first, and then I'll talk about the details of the proposed contract itself. So in February of 2019, the City Council approved a design-build contract with Wichita Water Partners. The item before you this morning is a proposed contract for engineering and technical support of commissioning and startup for Wichita Water Works, as I mentioned. And so I do want to start with some brief history of how the project was developed and the need for this request today, including the cost impact and the timing. So when that, in 2019, when that design-build project approach was approved, it did not include engineering and technical startup support within the proposed contract, but I would mention again, we've known this part was there, and there's some reasons why it makes sense to be here today that I'll talk about in just a moment. Even though the design-build project budget specifically itself does not include the cost for this necessary component, the current rate structure, the overall utility rate structure does and has since the project was initiated. So I don't know if you might recall, back in early March, we talked about some additional items related to this overall project. There are some things that are going on outside of the design-build contract itself, including an item like this, but it's all included in the overall rate structure, will not have any immediate rate impact, which I'll talk about in just a moment. So this cost has been accounted for since we started the project. And again, I want to talk then about the timing of why it makes sense to be doing this today compared to maybe having that a part of the original contract. Had the original contract for design and construction included this engineering and technical support, the guaranteed maximum price at that time would have practically increased by the same amount. You know, it's kind of hard to say five years ago what that cost would have looked like, but there was some risk, there would have been some risk involved at that time, not knowing the specifics, all the details that we know today. And so trying to include that cost at that time would have added most likely some additional risk that could have increased the cost. Again, a good reason why we're here today, having this discussion. By waiting until now to initiate this effort, we're better able to evaluate the true scope of work, the hours and the cost, eliminating that added risk that I just discussed and trying to develop the same five years ago. This is a large and complex project with many moving parts, and this is the right timing for consideration of the contract to support commissioning and startup of the new plant. We believe that there's significant value in hiring this expertise outside and independent of the original contract compared to having it included at that time. The, you know, this is really an industry standard, what we're considering today. The vast majority of design-build contracts across the country for projects of this nature and this size include technical support, just as you are considering today, that was not part of the original design-build contract. There's some real value for us having experts working directly for us, not within the confines of that larger design-build contract. And again, being at a point now where we are, we can really have a better feel of exactly what it is that we need going forward, because of where we've gotten with the project, construction being done, have a lot of information in hand, a lot of knowledge that we didn't have back then. What you're considering today, I mentioned, is an industry standard, and so I want to talk about the details of the contract itself. I'll mention the budget again at the end, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. So I mentioned that Wichita Water Works will replace the current water treatment plant to provide up to 120 million gallons of water per day to over 500,000 people in and around Wichita. You've heard me say this before, but I'd like to remind everybody that we are a regional water provider, providing clean and safe drinking water to one in six cans. It's 17% of the entire population. So we're excited to be at this point, ready to bring this plant online. Kind of going across some of the items at the bottom of the slide without spending a lot of time on detail. From now until this fall, we're working on what we call functional testing, finishing construction, equipment installation, and that functional testing. As we get into a point where water is available this fall, we will start chemical and hydraulic systems testing and process testing at a level that we can feel comfortable, that we can prove out that the plan is working the way we need it to, with the goal to bring the plant online in April of 2025. This also includes some conversion of the finished water pipeline. The main pipeline that brings treated water from the new water treatment plant to the Hess pump station currently brings raw water to the current plant, so there's a real timing element there of being able to make all that work this fall. So preparing for operation, the existing contract, and when I talk about that, the design-build contract that was established in 2019 does not include short-term operation support nor operational aspects such as development of standard operating procedures, maintenance programs, and risk management plans. Existing contracts provide minimal training of city staff focusing on equipment function more than ongoing variable operation. This was by design. Again, this is consistent with projects of this nature. We're not the only ones that are doing this. It makes sense to be having this discussion today, asking for your consideration of bringing this technical support. It's very specialized work that we're doing. This is not done. We've got some really good staff that has operated our current water treatment plant for time. They will continue to operate the new treatment plant. Making everything happen in between, bringing the new plan online and making the transition happen requires specialized expertise. That's what we're asking for you to consider today with this contract. So what is needed with this contract and will be provided is technical support to develop operational plans and procedures that incorporate the results of chemical and hydraulic process testing, developments of maintenance programs, spare parts recommendations for thousands of new assets, in-depth training of city staff for skill upgrades and decision-making required for new process control systems, and expertise to ensure a seamless transition between plants and continuity of service, which is definitely a big deal for us right now. What we're undertaking at this point, I mentioned, is not something that happens on a regular basis. So we've looked to the industry, we've looked to others who have done this, we've talked to a lot of people to understand their approach. And where we're at to this point and what we're considering today is very similar to what others have done. The request for proposals for considering the contract today for water treatment plant startup support resulted in two proposals being received. One met the city's criteria for short-term technical support without privatization of operations. Selection committee recommendation was for a contract with Operational Technical Services or OTS, who has a subconsultant, Woodard and Coran. OTS is certified with the city of Wichita as an emerging business enterprise, just so you know. For the contract itself, this is a proposed one-year contract with a total cost not to exceed just under $4.1 million. If needed, supplemental contracts could be added for future optimization efforts or for temporary staffing to fill critical positions that we have been unable to fill through normal hiring efforts thus far. Our goal is still to continue our hiring efforts. We plan to have as much staff as we can to bring this plan online, and we will be running this plant when it comes online. This again is to bridge that gap. We'll work throughout this process to do everything we can. This is a cost not to exceed. If we can find ways to provide savings, we will do that. And I mentioned before, this has no impact on the current rates. Staff recommends city council approve the contract for professional services for water treatment plant startup support with Operational Technical Services and authorize the necessary signatures. If approved, the project would kick off immediately with OTS joining the startup team as early as this week. I will tell you that OTS is present today at the meeting, including David Seiberman, the CEO of OTS, Rhonda Harris, Senior Technical Advisor. Woodard and Coran is also represented by Jay Sheehan, the Principal in Charge, and Chris McMahon, Senior Technical Advisor. They're here to help answer any technical questions you might have or provide further insight on what they propose to offer with this contract. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, I appreciate the presentation and all your work on this. How familiar and how prepared are city workers for the new system that we have here?
Good question, and that's one of the reasons why we need this additional support, technical support and service that we're asking for today. And we've known that we're going to need this all along. We've got staff that can run the plant, similar treatment processes. They've been involved from, we've got certain staff who've been involved from the beginning that continue to be involved, that are going to help provide some of that technology transfer, some of that information and training. But we've only got so many resources, especially with needing to keep the existing plant operating. This really helps fill that gap. And as I mentioned, the technical expertise that OTS and Woodard and Coran bring, they do this across the country in similar situations. They have specific expertise in these areas when it comes to transitioning between operations and specific to these plants. They will learn and understand every single thing that we've got going on. They will help provide that resource gap that we need to make sure that all of our staff are trained. So we've got people that are going to figure this out. This is going to be the boost that they need. This is what we have needed again from the start to be able to make this happen.
So are we going to have a number of new employees or employees that aren't currently working with the water treatment plant, the one we have running? Are we going to have employees outside of that scope coming in while they continue to run the old plant?
We've got, so we set out on a task to hire additional staff, and we've done pretty well with that. We're still lacking a few operators, but our plan and our goal with hiring 17 additional staff, we've got 11 to 12 of those hired at this point. We're doing everything we can to get them trained through the current plant, which we've got to keep running, and getting them to the new plant. What's especially going to happen between now and April is getting everybody we've got rotated to that new plant, getting them trained on the new processes. By having that additional staffing, that allows us the ability to keep the old plant running, training folks on the new plant, having someone like OTS on the board allows us to really have the resources to make that happen and hold everything together. So the answer to your last question is it's a little bit of all of the above. But, you know, this is a big new plant, complex plant, but what we're doing here isn't a lot different than what's going on at the existing plant. And so the general knowledge that staff has is going to carry over and will help them adapt.
Yeah, and I know we have somebody looking at what we're going to do with the old plant. So April is our goal to have the new plant up and running fully.
April is our goal to have the new plant up and running, especially when we look at water availability. It's very necessary that that happens by then. I think we're on track. Construction of the new plant is effectively done. We've started some of the early testing. We are wrapping up the full commissioning and startup plan with Wichita Water Partners now. This is one of the last pieces to really fill in what we do for operational support, technical support, commissioning and startup, and to really get things moving. But we're on track for April, yes.
Okay, could you explain or just let us know what other items are there outside of the design-build contract that's coming up that we'll have to deal with in the upcoming months?
The, so I mentioned back in March, on March 5th, there was an item that the city council approved to increase the overall project budget. And I'll tell you real quick, some of the items that were included in that, that we're still working on, that are coming, that budget would help support some of the additional work that's still happening. We've got improvements at Hess pump station. Just to remind everybody, when the new treatment plant's online, it's going to be sending treated water to Hess pump station out to our distribution system. We looked, I'll tell you real quick because this question came up just recently. We looked at the idea, you know, this city was developed around where that water treatment plant's currently at and all the water being sent out through the Hess pump station. Question was asked, why didn't we move that all up to the new water treatment plant? To do so, some of our largest diameter main pipes are coming out of that pump station to be able to provide the system, especially, you know, effectively from that core area. We had a rough estimate of another $300 million to be able to move all of that up there. So I say that because Hess is going to stay where it's at and will continue to pump from there. But to go back to what I was talking about to your question on March 5th, some of the items associated, there's some additional improvements there that are needed at Hess pump station. So that was an increase in the budget at the time for that. We've had a large, complex project, you've heard me say that. We've had some things come to light during construction that were really just hard to see, even with the development of the original contract. Some things that we, both sides agreed to, city and Wichita Water Partners, that needed to be done. Some were for regulatory reasons, dealing with lime residuals that come out of the plant, dealing with wastewater. We've got some additional costs for that. One of the bigger cost items that's part of the additional budget that council approved in March was extending the completion date. When the original design-build contract was approved, it looked at a completion date of September of this year because of, and it's really not tied to the drought, but the drought's not helping. If you look at completing this project in September, we cannot provide the necessary raw water during the summer that is needed to truly test out this plant. So the completion date is being extended. There's some additional costs associated with that. We're working through those details now. All of that is included in the additional budget that the council approved in early March. But those are a few items that will still be coming in as we get through completion. I think we're in a pretty good place. I'm not going to stand here and tell you there won't be anything else, but as far as I know and where we're headed, this is one of the last big components to be able, from the operational support perspective, that we need to be able to bring the plan online.
All right, appreciate it.
Council. Or Glasscock. Councilmember Glasscock.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question regarding the financial considerations. I think it was on slide 42, if that one would be pulled up. So on the financial consideration portion of our packet, it says the contract cost is not expected to impact short-term water rates. I think on here it says no short-term rate impact. Then it says current, on a different slide, it said no changes to the current rate. However, it also says that the full funding is a one-time expense available in the water utility fund. So what would be the change of where it would affect rates? If the money's already there, it's already a one-time expense, why would this potentially have a long-term effect?
It shouldn't. And I got to thinking about that, looking at this information yesterday, and we probably should have left that information out. I'm not even sure why it was there to start. I would tell you, across the utility, we're seeing some stresses just across the board, and it's not because of this project or anything else. Inflationary impacts are starting to hit us pretty hard, especially on commodities, on things like chemicals. It's something that we're going to have to evaluate as we go into later this year when we normally have our conversations with the council about upcoming rates for the future. And I think that that was probably mentioned in there as something that we're just going to have to make sure this is all rolled together with everything that we're doing. But what it should have said was that we are not going to have any rate impact.
Thank you.
So thank you, and I apologize for that confusion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Gary, I have a question. I'm going to read you a quote, and if you could address it, that would be awesome. "Not only do we have loans that we still need to pay for, but the new water treatment plant is also going to be paid for by rate payers over time. Now again, the $4 million to get it operational is something that should have been accounted for by previous administrators, and it was not. Can you explain why? I think it's a little redundant, but I just want to make sure that we're addressing the questions."
Sure. So I might go back to what I talked about on the second slide. We didn't really know at the time exactly what this cost would look like, but we knew, we had an estimate that covers this amount, if you will. All of this rolled into our current rates, the overall utility budget that the city council has approved. Whether it was in the project budget or not, really is not significant to this discussion. As I mentioned before, had it been included with the original design-build contract, that guaranteed maximum price would have been more. If the cost estimate at that time was $4 million, it would have been $4 million more. The fact that we're coming forward with this now and this $4 million cost is not something that was left behind. It was not something that was left out. It is included in the overall rate structure and the budget. Heard you mentioned the loans. So as you know, a vast majority of this project, along with BNR, is supported by WFI and SRF loans. We've got, I talked about the items on March 5th that increase the project budget, including this one today. Not everything's going to fit within those loans. There are caps on the capacity of those loans, but I would tell you too, there's, we've tried to find a balance, even utilizing those loans, revenue bonds, and cash. The cheapest way for us to finance things in anything that we do is through cash based on our revenue. And so things like this most likely will be financed by cash. But there's a balance between those loans, revenue bonds, and cash. We try to find the sweet spot. I can't explain that into you in detail. Our finance folks would have to do that on our side. But it's all still been accounted for. This isn't an added cost. This isn't an unexpected cost. It's one that we knew would be coming forward at this point in time, for all the reasons I talked about. It makes more sense to have considered this now. I believe this is a much more accurate cost because we know what we need specifically on where we're at and what we're doing going forward to bring this plan online.
So when the O was taken out, the operations money was set aside or allocated potentially for?
Correct.
For this $4 million. So it's nothing new? We knew this was coming, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I think that's a great way to qualify it, yes. It's always been there. The budget consideration has always been there from the start.
And I'd also just like to say for the record that I appreciate that we are willing to make the investment in our own staff to keep as many of them that wanted to stay and be part of a legacy project for our city. So I appreciate going the extra mile to invest in our employees.
I might mention that real quick, if you don't mind, because I appreciate that, and we really do too. I mentioned with the request for proposals, we had one submittal. There are a lot of companies out there that run utility operations across the country, including utilities of our size. It's been our goal from the very beginning that we are going to have our staff run this plan, and that's still what we're going to do. So one of the proposals included the operational component of actually running the plant, and that's why they weren't considered, so.
I just have one follow-up to a comment that you just made. Why do you think on a project this size, we only had one bid for to operate it?
Well, we did have two, but there's, some of them have a different model in how they operate. We have found through the course of this project, just like a lot of other things, I mentioned before, this is not something that people do every day, right? We haven't built a new water treatment plant in almost 90 years, just like a lot of other communities. There's not a lot of companies out there that do this type of work. It's pretty specialized. When we first looked at the idea of some type of support before getting to this point, because we started looking at this probably even as much as a year and a half to two years ago, trying to figure out where we wanted to be, we got very little interest. We were trying to see if we could get support to help run our current treatment plant. Well, we got staff trained on the new plant, and there's just not a lot of people that do that. The, there's quite a few vendors that they want to take over operations. And again, that's not something that we wanted to do. So that limited the pool of folks that we had that might be interested in what we want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gary, for the presentation. And I also want to thank your staff. You already have so much going on, and then adding this project and BNR is just, you know, one more thing. And I see my friend Laura Quick in the back, who I know has been working on this project specifically with trying to get staff, and had several conversations with her about this and the challenge of hiring people in this environment right now, especially for these very specialized jobs. I'm going to ask a few questions, and they may be a little bit redundant, but there's been some confusion and some things in the media, and I just want to make sure we're crystal clear. So the funding is in the water utility fund, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So that would have been allocated how long ago, potentially?
If you look at the rate structure that the city council has approved since 2019, we can say that it's been within that pot, if you will, since then.
So we knew we were going to do this?
Correct.
Correct. So will, and I know you've already answered this, but I'd just like it one more time. Will this impact water rates for residents or businesses?
It will not impact water rates.
Great, thank you very much. You also mentioned, and maybe just a little more detail on this, that this is the best practice in the process that other communities who have gone through this have done, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And that's because we're doing design-build and not design-build-operate, correct?
Correct. And I might mention real quick on that, the, I mentioned before, and I would tell you again, if you look at the vast majority of similar projects across the country... again, if you look at the vast majority of similar projects across the country, very few include design-build operations altogether. And I mentioned, and I would say it again, I think there's some real value in separating those and having the operational support, the technical support, working directly for us and not embedded within that team. I think it can work, but you have to be really careful that you've got the design-build team, the people who are delivering the project, also providing folks to watch over them, if that makes sense. This is not unlike other large, complex projects that we have, transportation projects or the utility projects. When we look at managing construction, if it was a typical design-bid-build, we will hire expertise to oversee construction outside of those contracts to work directly for us.
Thank you. And just one last kind of question, kind of shameless plug. You mentioned drought, and we, you and I have had many a conversation with this. Every time I have an opportunity to talk about the current drought situation, we're still in drought, phase one, hopeful not to get to drought phase two. We're getting some really, really warm temperatures coming up later this week, so hopefully people will remember that at this point, we're requesting that they cut back on watering their lawn and all those kinds of things, so that we don't have to go into phase two where it's required. But you had mentioned this during another council meeting. Would you mind just reemphasizing one more time the importance that this new water treatment plant will help us in addressing drought in our community?
Certainly, and thank you. So this new water treatment plant provides some flexibility that we don't have now. Our current water treatment plant is very limited on the amount of groundwater that it can treat. It has to be a blend, and it has to be a blend that includes a higher amount of surface water from Cheney. And there's a lot of reasons for that on the technical side that I don't want to bore you with. This new treatment plant has the ability to treat 100% groundwater. Now, while we still need a balance effectively, the Equisbed Aquifer is in good shape. It's 94% full, even with the drought conditions. The ASR project, Aquifer Storage and Recovery project, has worked well to keep the aquifer in good health and in good shape. So it's practical that if this drought were to continue even longer term, once this plan is online, we can start looking at the possibility of treating a lot more groundwater. In theory, for some period of time, it wouldn't be sustainable for too long. If Cheney Reservoir was unavailable, we could still provide water to the citizens of Wichita, which we can't do now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your work.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, have you got the management structure figured out, or will this contract help you do that?
We do have a management structure figured out, so, and maybe going back to one of the questions from Councilmember Hoheisel. This is a fancy new plant. There's a lot of complexities to it, there's state-of-the-art technology, but it's not something that our staff can't figure out and is not figuring out already. One of the things we did in kind of shuffling things around and people around, trying to utilize the resources the best that we could. Mike Jacobs has been our water production and pumping superintendent for many years now, overseeing all things related to treatment operations. We moved Mike up to the new plant some time ago to really oversee the process of bringing this plan online, to be our knowledge base, to be our expert, to understand. It's been truly valuable to have him there and him being able to step away from daily operations. So he has helped establish a structure. Councilmember Tuttle mentioned Laura Quick. Laura's been heavily involved in the optimization of these operations and looking at our structure, but it's not going to be a lot different than what we have now. We still run 24/7. We run three shifts. We've got shift supervisors. We've got a plant manager. We've got a new plant manager hired. So to get to the specifics of your question, we do have a structure in place, but we will utilize the expertise of OTS, pending your approval today, to make sure that is where we need to be and find places, if we can find efficiencies, be more effective, or optimize that stat, that structure, then that's what we'll do. But I think we're in a good place already.
Thank you.
Several questions. Start off with, it's the most obvious question, I think it's a very direct answer. The question really is, why was operations support not included in 2019? Actually, to be more specific, it would have been December 18th of 2018. Why was operations support not included on December 18th, 2018?
Mayor, my recall, going back to that time, and I wasn't directly involved in the project at that moment, but having been involved for some time now and kind of looking at the history of things, I recall that there being some discussion at the time of the effectiveness of including operations at that point. And talking to the vendors and looking at where we were headed with the project, one of the things I mentioned before, and I think still makes sense, is it was hard to really predict at that point in time with just barely getting started on where we were going, to know what the operational support would even look like. I would tell you, whether this was part of the decision or not, I want to reiterate, and I know I'm being redundant here, but I think it's important that the, it's, it works better to have this operational support outside of that design-build contract. From our, what we know about how these projects work, what we've looked at that others do, I mentioned that this is consistent, what we're proposing today on these types of projects. I don't think we would have been in the best position to have tried to continue down that road with the operations as part of the design-build team. I can't speak to the specifics, why the decision was made to move forward at that time, but I think it was the right one, and it was the smart one, so that we could be here today to have a more accurate accounting of what we need to do. Trying to estimate costs at that time, trying to estimate resources and staffing, I think would have been tremendously challenging, and there would have been risk added, particularly on our side, of trying to figure out what the costs look like in particular.
Just want to put it on record that the December 18th, 2018 meeting had a four-to-three vote. The four yays were Jeff Longwell, James Clendenon, Jeff Blueball, and Pete Meitzner. The no votes were Brian Fry, Brandon Johnson, and Cindy Claycombe. There's only one person currently on the council who voted on this specific matter, and that person voted no regarding moving forward with not having operations as part of that plan. So I'm giving context to that question, because again, a majority of this board was not on the council when this was voted on, which was back on December 18th, 2018, and operations was discussed, and operations was a recommendation by staff. It was also a recommendation by the committee who took a look at what should have been part of that construction project. So now this new council has an opportunity to look at this as two separate opportunities, build and design and build and operations instead of all-in-one. So I think it's disingenuous when we say that this project is $494 million, because I would assume that that would include from bill, from design to operations would be a $494 million project, but in reality, it's now increasing. So the question then is, what is the accurate amount telling community how much this project does cost and why was operations, I know it was accounted for in the rate structure, but not in the project amount? So what would be the response to community when they ask, well, this is a project, if it's $494 million, I would assume it's from design to operations, but in reality, it was just design and construction, not operations?
I would tell you from my perspective, and I, I can't go back in time to the discussions and the decisions that were made then. Regardless of the size and the complexity of the project, just, I might tell you this for what it's worth, it is rare that we have a design-build project, or even a design-bid-build project, that includes an operational component. I think, from what I remember in the discussions at that time, it felt like it might make sense because of the size of the project, needing to run two plants at the same time, that we should look at an operational component. I think we're fortunate that it didn't happen, but I would tell you, it's not the norm. The, I mentioned again, you can look at projects across the country of this size, of this type, they rarely include operations as part of the design-build contract. Even though that's where it was being considered, and that's where it could have headed, I'm not sure that we were headed down the right path at that time. I can't go back, obviously, and change that or provide any more context to that. But, but I'm convinced, I'm absolutely convinced, we're in a better place because that did not happen. We have, but we have design-build projects happening at our current treatment plant now, and other projects that we're doing that don't include any operational component. Because of the size, and again, looking at you've got to bring additional people on, and honestly, I would tell you, I think at that point, probably not knowing any better, it probably made sense to staff that we should look at the operational component. We would have made it work. It might have cost more, and I think we probably would have been reevaluating that portion of it at this point in the same manner that we're having this discussion today. I apologize, Mayor, if that doesn't exactly answer your question, but that's probably the best information I can provide you from my standpoint.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Since my vote was brought up, I just want to clarify and add context to that. Running for office, I heard from a lot of folks in the community about complaints of the city of Wichita changing a process in the middle of a process of somebody bid on something, and either council or staff would want to go a different direction. Can't say if that always happened, but when I was elected, I wanted to put an end to that. The December vote, my no vote, was because we were changing the process. Jacobs had won the contract. We had decided, not we, a majority of the council had said they wanted to go from design-build-operate to design-build. I didn't agree with changing the process, but to this day, I will say it was the right decision to do what we did. Design-build brings us to this place now where we have a decision to look at, where we know exactly what we need. Again, my no vote was just on process. I've continued to be consistent on that over the years. If this body wanted to change the process in the middle of a bid, I would vote against it because I don't agree with changing process. If we want to have standards or a certain thing, we need to do that out front. I would also say I wasn't on that steering committee. Jacobs, and I can't remember their former name, had been working with the city on evaluating our water system for quite some time. That was probably why they were as qualified as they were at that time and why they got the staff recommendation. Not fully sure on that, but they had been working with the city for quite some time. But when it came down to the December 18th vote, again, I don't agree with changing process. If we want to have a difference of things, then we need to end the RFP process, come up with a vision as a body, and then put out a RFP. So that was my no vote, but I've said on the record in other spaces, while I disagree with changing the process, I do agree with the outcome. I do agree with design-build. I do agree with where we're at today. And I sat on the steering committee for the North Water Treatment Plant since then, and I agree with all of the decisions that we've made, except for adding more color to the water treatment plant. I think we should. But other than that, I do agree with where we're at today. I think we made the right decision, and I would have the same vote again if it came up.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, I still got some heartburn. If our staff can figure it out, what value do they bring? $4 million worth of value to the water treatment plant? Maybe we can hear from them what value they would bring.
And we certainly can. And let me qualify, when I said our staff can figure it out, our staff can figure it out with their support. We've got a lot of people in a lot of places. We're still not fully staffed. We're still having to keep the existing plant running. We've got people up there when they can, learning. I talked about Mike Jacobs has taken this all in and trying to train people. We have to have someone bridge that gap. We can't do that without this additional support. And I apologize for not making that clearer. This is very consistent on a, on a project like this, to have this type of support, and the cost is what we expected, and it's relevant for the services that we are getting. It's not just to teach our staff. It's to provide, I would go back and talk a little bit about some of the things that we're getting out of this. Standard operating procedures, maintenance programs, and risk management plans. As much as I don't want to admit this entirely to you, I will tell you, at our current water treatment plant, those are not up to date. In fact, some of those, we're not even sure when they were completed. We're making it work. We have to start off on the right foot. Those types of things are a big part of this contract and the services that they are going to provide, and I should have been more clear about that to begin with. We do not have the resources, the staffing, to make that happen and still be able to run the plan on a daily basis. So they're going to bring tremendous value. The first thing you asked about was structure, with making sure we're in the right place, filling in the gaps, making sure our staff is trained, because everybody we've got has got to keep the plants operational and getting water out to the public every day.
Mayor, if I could, that's, to me, that's the key issue. We spend a lot of time talking about what our staff has the time to do, both the existing staff, and then we're bringing a lot of new people on. And it would be maybe helpful to hear from OTS, because when you look at what we've included in the report, that's, to me, the most compelling part of it. And Gary just made some reference to that in terms of the number of plans and documents that are required to be able to guide us as we go forward and to bring new people on over time and help them understand a pretty complex operation, one that's much more complex than what we have today. Just the use of technology is so different. And we just, we, as we talked through it, I was convinced that there is no way we would be able to do justice to all of those manuals and all of those plans and still have our staff learn the plant operations. It just, I don't think it was going to be physically possible to do that on the schedule that we want in terms of bringing the plan up in April.
So may we have OTS come up?
Sure.
Good morning. I'm Rhonda Harris. I am the chief technical officer of OTS. I am senior technical advisor for this project. My colleague, Jay Shien, is the senior vice president of Woodard and Curran, and we are responsible for putting the team together and responsible for making this whole project work. So I wanted to elaborate a little bit. I am a licensed operator and registered engineer, and I'm not in Kansas, I'm in Texas, but I am working on reciprocity with my licenses right now. And we have folks who are registered in Kansas, and we have the technical expertise and the experience to put together, this is literally over 1,000 standard operating procedures for your facility, and your own, and your own M manual, and your startup and commissioning plan, and your risk management plan. And yes, you have great staff, but they've got to run the plant. And so trying to have them do both is, as you said, physically impossible to try in such a short period of time. So we come in to bring you the assistance to do that. We have technical staff who are highly qualified. I have 48 years in this industry, so I've been doing this a very, very long time, and I've written standard operating procedures and on M manuals literally around the world, myself and my team that works with me. I used to work for CH2M, who was previous to Jacobs. I worked on the original Wichita evaluation of their facilities 15 or 10 years ago now, almost, as I got started on that, and then I moved, and I'm now with OTS. We feel like we have the right team for you. We're a very compact team, and the two companies are working closely together to be sure that we give you a technical expertise that you need in an amount of funding that is reasonable for the work we're doing and the level of expertise we're bringing in. And we believe that we got a good team for you. So, Jay?
Yeah, Jay Shien, for the record, from Woodard and Curran. Just to add to what Rhonda said, think of this as a SWAT team flying in. You know, we're going to come in with different professionals in different areas. We're going to, we're going to bring those people to assess and to look at the new plant and to set systems up the right way from the beginning. You know, you've run the plant, the existing plant, for 90 years. Some things fall apart, fall, fall behind over time, and because we've seen all these different plants, all these different places, it's really easy for us to set things up right from the beginning. Just one other thing, just to illustrate that point, asset management is managing all the different components of a system. So you've got a treatment plant, you've got pumps and pipe and motors and valves and all these things.
Chemical. Chemical equipment, all this stuff.
All of that has to be set up. So meanwhile, your people are maintaining those existing valves and pumps and pipe and motors. When we set up the new system, all that has to be inventoried, all that has to be added into the system, all that has, every one of those pieces of equipment has to have a, an SOP. So there's just a tremendous amount of work that goes with that. So it's, it's way beyond the expectations of any existing staff. And you also have to think about existing staff have worked at one plant for a long time, so they haven't really been through this experience. This is something very new to them.
As these folks mentioned, they have, they have some SOPs in place. They don't even know how old they are because they don't know when they were written. Not necessarily applicable to the new facility. So again, starting you off on the right foot with this brand-new, very expensive facility, and you're moving forward with the right information is really what our goal is, to set you up to be successful and set your staff to be successful. So that's really what we're here for.
Or insurance policy and the easy button.
That's what we call it, the easy button.
What will be the process of looking at the old plant in terms of creating new SOPs for the new water treatment plant? Will you be looking at the old one as well? And will you be able to also provide some recommendations regarding the current plant?
We certainly can do that. I mean, we have, we will have the people here. We'll have operations professionals, maintenance professionals. Our staff consists of licensed operators, certified maintenance staff, self and health and safety staff, CMMS, SCADA folks. Our team is, we made sure we had components for all of that. So we do want to be engaged in looking at the old plant to see what they're doing now, to see if any of that can still be used. We'll certainly use it. There's no reason to reinvent it. If it's good, likely it's going to need some updates. And you also have to make a decision on how long you want to keep that old plant functioning before you replace it or change it over to the new plant, because it's not going to be a, a six-month transition. It's going to take a little while, a year plus, before you really want to say, okay, we're done with this old plant, now we can decommission that. And even the decommissioning, there are processes for that. How do you want to do that? Do you want to, what we call mothball it, which means you take it out of service, but you keep it ready to put back into service? Or do you literally decommission and tear out the equipment, because a lot of it is going to be old and past its useful life? Are you going to have to replace some of the equipment if you want to mothball it? Or are you going to say, okay, no, it's done, that is shut down completely? So there's some decisions to be made through the process of that, and we're here to help work you through that process of how you're going to integrate the two, literally take the new one and make it separate. Do you need this one to still be the backup? And if you do, how are you going to do that? I know you guys have a consultant that's helping you with that, but we're going to be your boots on the ground to help you with that.
So is that a redundancy, then? Because last week, we approved $85,000 for a consultant to look at the old plant. Is this a redundancy, or is this?
Mayor, I might address that if you don't mind. And council, we do have an evaluation underway. And you are correct that the, the contract that was approved last week is for that. We've got some recommendations that we're looking at already in place for, for some of the things that she talked about. We're moving in a good direction with that already. In fact, we'll be discussing options with the steering committee in August for, for potential discussion with the council sometime after that. If we can utilize working with OTS as they're helping us bring the new plan online, we will. I don't know that it's 100% necessary, but we'll, we'll take all the expertise we can with that integration. We've already got a good process moving forward. I think we're in a good place on where we're headed with this. I appreciate some of the things that were said. Those are some of the, the items that we're already taking into consideration.
I mean, I have a quick follow-up to the mayor's question. I know there's a whole list, so I don't want to get out of order, but because that's a quick follow-up. In terms of, you said we're already in operation for, we only passed that last week in terms of the contractual obligation. If this entity could also meet those obligations, what would be the detriment of seeing if there's an out?
Well, I, I don't mind doing that. We certainly can, but we're going, the first thing that's going to happen is we're going to start adding more cost if we're not careful, that may not be necessary. And I don't doubt their expertise they could bring to it, but the consultant that we've hired also has similar expertise. So I think we're in the right place with the consultant that we've hired to move forward from that.
I think what OTS is saying, I'll let them complete their thoughts, but what they're saying is, when you determine what direction you want to go, they're here to help us operationalize that and make sure that the two plants are functioning together, or if we're decommissioning, that we do that in an appropriate way.
That is correct. So again, the technology, and then we would help with the boots on the ground, doing that and implementing that recommendation, whichever way that your other consultant makes a decision. And, and we, again, not to, one of the things that we were asked to do is say, if, if you needed some additional temporary operational staffing to get yourself up to speed, can we provide that? And we do, in fact, provide that type of staffing for other clients, so we do have that capability of, again, very temporary staffing. And we can either do it where we, we find the folks, we put them on temporary, then you make a decision if you want to hire them or not, and then they move, they, you know, transition over to city of Wichita employs. So that is not contract operations in the sense that it's not a private company operations. It is, it is contract staffing to assist you in your operations, still working under the direct responsibility of your supervisors. So it's a temporary way to get people in here and get them set and then move them forward into your, your house, as it were.
Thank you, Rhonda. Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for being here. Really appreciate it. We got one chance to get this right, and appreciate taking the lead from the experts in the area. My question's actually for Gary. I just have a quick question. How many of the projects that we put RFPs out do include the operating part? Like, the first thing that I think of is like multimodal. I'm sure that the bid that we received or whatever did not include the operations. I'm just, it kind of piggybacks on what Mayor Wu was talking about. Is that unusual that we took the operation piece out, or what does that look like?
I would tell you off the top of my head that I can't think of a project that comes to mind that does include operations. Our goal is for us to provide operations for our facilities. Now, there's, there's a lot of things that happen across the organization, the facilities, that sometimes there's additional support needed, but from a core operations standpoint, I mentioned before, it's pretty rare, and I'm not sure that I can think of a project right now that includes operational support.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, so a couple of questions here. When Jacobs was originally, I guess, awarded the bid, I'm, I'm not sure if that's phrased right, but you said that operations was included in that. Does that mean that that would have been their employees that would have been running the plant?
It would have been, it could have been. It was most likely going to be a sub-consultant of theirs who specializes in operations, most likely.
Okay, thank you. So this, this, this contract would be for one year?
Correct.
Okay. Say, and this is kind of a two-part question, say, two years from now, something major happens with the facility. I assume we have the insurance that can help take care of it. Are they going to be available for consulting on any issues that arise? And that kind of ties into the question number two about phase three? Because this contract is just for phase one and phase two, but phase three talks about, we're going to come and look at this in a future date about, I, I'm not sure if that would include consulting in the future on any major incidences or events? And can you talk a little bit about what phase three might include, just in that way we know what we're looking at further down the road?
And I might let one of you talk about that if you don't mind.
Phase three is exactly that. It is a, an evaluation at six months to a year down the road, or if something comes up for a, an optimization opportunity. And we were asked to provide, in the proposal, the option to do that, so that you all have the choice to make that selection in the future, year, year and a half, two years down the road if something happens, or if you want to look at, okay, we've been running it for a year, we think we can be a little more efficient at it, those kinds of things. And so that's what the phase three is. It's that evaluation, which is a consulting evaluation for whatever needs to be in that. So we've given that option, and that allows you all then to come back in and, and then determine, we can negotiate a price, and then we can bring, they can bring that to council. So it is a separate price for phase three. And we have done some ballpark estimates. Again, we're talking two years down the road after you get the plant running. It's kind of hard to say today what that would be. So we have given, mostly just an hours estimate. If you needed to do some specific things, here are some estimates of hours to do that. Not really any dollar amounts per se at this point. We just said, here's scope that we think would be useful for you to have in your pocket if you need it. And that's, that's what they have in the phase three, and that's what, they did not include it in this, in this particular phase at this time.
Thank you for that.
It, it does give you a little bit of a blanket to figure out what needs to be done.
Okay, so just to be clear, this would be, if we approve this contract, this is just for the first year?
Correct. This is for the first year.
Okay.
And it gets through the planning phase for the startup commissioning and the startup and commissioning with your contractor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Two quick questions, just hitting on the word first year makes me believe that there's subsequent years when this is supposed to be a one-time allocation. So can you provide clarification of that just again?
Okay, one year for startup and commissioning. Then the second, the third phase, again, phase one is the planning for the startup, because you've got to build a bunch of plans to do the actual, and then the second phase is the actual startup. We're planning to do those in a one-year period, along with your contractor. That's why we, we call it the first year, but it's that one year of operations and commissioning assistance. Any subsequent work would be in phase three, would be either the first full year, second full year of operations of the facility after it's been handed over to you from your contractor.
Okay, so this would be a question for Gary. Do we expect another request to have a second year or a third year?
At this point, we would not. But like I talked, mentioned earlier, in the, the things that we've seen through the development of this project, and I, you know, we talked before about where we're at overall costs, and, and I, it's pretty remarkable, really, on the size of this project, where we're currently at, related to change orders with the design-build team. We're tracking in a really good place. Everything is where we need it to be. Our expectation is this one-year contract will get us up and running and we'll be ready to go. But this is a big deal. This isn't something we've done for some time. We would like to have that flexibility in case there's something that we need additional expertise for, but right, as of right now, we would not expect it.
Thank you. I have one last question. I probably should ask this.
Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
Excuse me. It's a safety net. It's a half-billion-dollar water treatment plant, one of the largest projects in the country, and we just want to make sure that we get it right, not just here at the front end, but as we continue to operate. And that's maybe not an approach that's always been followed in the past, and that's why I think it's so important that we have the resources available. I think we, we keep coming back to the community survey. Water and sewers was considered one of the top priorities in terms of the community and its expectations of us. And I, I think we're all trying to be safe and prudent in terms of the way we bring the plant on and the way that we operate it going forward.
Yeah, I agree. I think when we talk about wanting to...
If I can add one thing to that, this is something that has become more and more common in these startup and commissioning contracts, where they are independent, you know, an organization like us or a similar organization who's doing the, basically third-party independent startup and commissioning, and an option, a third phase, if you will, for additional help after a year or so of operations. Again, for that, for that safety net, that umbrella, to be sure. And that has become, particularly as we have so many of these big facilities in the last five years being built and coming on all over the country, we're seeing this just becoming much more common.
Thank you. I, I think we all want to get it right, and I think that's why we have so many questions up here as well. Very simple question, maybe not a simple answer, but I should ask this before every vote. What happens if we don't approve this?
If we don't approve this, we're going to be challenged to, in a lot of areas. I think the manager said it well, and it's something I should have hit on originally more about everything that goes into the support that they're providing. And I would tell you again, we're, we're not very current at our treatment plant right now. We've been operating for 80 years with risk management plans, with standard operating procedures, all of these things that go into this. We need to have those to start this project. Manager mentioned a half-a-billion-dollar project. We need to get off on the right foot. We'll have to figure out a way to shuffle even more resources. There are things that would have to happen on our end operationally that aren't going to get done. We would add risk to operations of the current treatment plant because we would have to take more people there and, and allocate them to doing some of these things. But I, I'm here to tell you, when, when people like OTS do this on a regular basis, that they have the very specific expertise that we don't have. This is a state-of-the-art plant. There's some complexities that are new, that are not part of our current plant. I have faith that we've got staff that are going to figure these things out, but we need that additional expertise, not even just with the planning part of it, but to be able to train our staff, or we could be challenged with significant risk here when we bring this new plan online to make sure that we're meeting regulatory requirements.
Councilmember Johnston.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to fill in a few gaps. One, I'm supportive of this proposal today, making a half-billion-dollar investment. Want to make sure we have everything right, all the i's dotted, t's crossed, and I have faith that you all can do that. There was a mention earlier, Gary stole my thunder on the change order, so I won't say that because he already said it. But when we look at the old plant, I was on that committee as well, there's a proposal that will come to council about that, and council will get to decide what we want to do with the old plant, so mothball it, use it for other things. The organization that was chosen had some really good ideas, so looking forward to that discussion. But really want to highlight, we've known for some time on the steering committee and those meetings were open to the public, that we'd operate two water treatment plants at one time for a little bit, and that staff would need to be trained on the new one, and we would need some expertise on that, and that's where we're at today. This gives us an opportunity to have our own employees trained on the new plant from the experts to get all the troubleshooting done, as well as see what that transition's going to look like from the current plant to the new plant. Current plant, again, being over 80 years old, into a brand-new plant with brand-new SOPs and, and all of that. So I'm supportive of this. I'd rather spend a little bit more than what we had hoped for now than have some issues later that will cost us even more. And I think that going through this process and having all of our staff educated on the same levels are experts that'd be helping us will be a benefit to our city. And again, I'm just seeing that this is a generational investment, so we've had one plant for almost a century. I think this one, with all the redundancies and the way it's been constructed, will probably last more than a century. So I think we're on the right path. Again, a lot of this was discussed in the steering committee. I know not everybody watches all of our steering committees, but this is something that we have expected to come up for quite some time, and now we're here.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Gary, I just have one more question, and then I'll save my comments until after public comments. But is it safe to assume that there's going to be optimized savings even from this, and it'll be more than the, the cost of the contract?
I don't know about the last part, but I'm comfortable in saying one of our goals with this contract is to look for optimized savings, correct? Because of the expertise that OTS and Water and Curran bring, and being involved in these types of projects and the efficiencies that they'll provide to, to fill in the gaps, to support our staff, our number-one goal is to provide, to look for operational efficiencies, cost savings, anything that takes us into the future especially, so that we're ready to take off running with this plant most effectively as we can, especially on the cost side, but also on the staffing and resource side.
Thank you.
For the record, I'm David Sipman. I'm actually the CEO of OTS. To answer that question, I micromanage all of our budgets to make sure that we do find savings in everything we do. Yesterday, we purchased vehicles in your community, we are renting homes in your community. It's our, it's our point to be part of your community as well. If you need us assistance in the future, we'll be there. But we look at costs of how to reduce those costs down on every... But we look at costs of how to reduce those costs down on every project to make sure we understand the ratepayers are paying for all this overall. It might have been in your budget, but still somebody's paying for it at the end of the day. In every community we go to, we manage those costs as an expectation. This is our top cost number. We expect to always come below that at every single time. So I hope that addresses that, that question for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, OTS, for answering a lot of these questions as well as Gary. I see no further questions from the bench, so we will now open it up for public comment. Are there any individuals in the public who would like to speak on this specific matter?
Doug Ballard, not leaving Riverside. Back up a little bit for some of you that weren't here. From my perspective, there was a group of us left over from Occupy Wichita that got involved in, in this project when it came out for a request for a proposal. You came out with, just from memory, you came out with a request for a study and as I remember, there was a 15, 16 different people that were interested in doing a study and then possibly look into the financing and the, come up with the, actually executing the recommendations. I worked as a contractor, for a mechanical contractor for most of my working career. One of my first projects that I was involved, a very small part, was this building right here. And we were the mechanical contractor on this, this building. I, I was very concerned, it's something I've been interested in since 1960. And water, got interested in it from my eighth-grade science teacher. He told me, "The war of all wars will be over water." And still looking pretty good, so I kind of still believe that. So the, the original deal on the study, I was really concerned about past the study part. So again, I worked for a big contractor over 30 years. So CH2M Hill was the successful company. CH2M Hill was a $5-billion company that, in that time period before you let the contract onto water, they were purchased by Jacobs, which was a $5, $10-billion company. So one of the things that concerned me, and I tell people and they just look at me and I still am concerned, is so I'm not a big fan of design, build, operates, for sure. So I can tell you, well, I like design, you know, and then build and then maybe some help on the operate. I've just been involved in too many projects. It's good for the contractor. It takes away a lot of the possibilities for things going wrong, but it's not great for the customer. So I was on a committee 30 years ago to study possibly building a new water treatment plant and there were so many developers and real estate people on the committee because they didn't want to spend $80 million on a new water treatment plant. And of course now it's, that's just a change order. So, but anyway, my point is, at the 11th hour, you had two bidders on this contract. And I can, I'll tell you, I wasn't going to say anything, but you mentioned that some names. I had a meeting with Frye and I was begging him to take the operating out of the contract. You can't let him design it and then build it and then operate it for two to five years. There's, there's books you can buy about companies who privatize their water system and then what happens is the private company just walks away and they've got junk. And I'm not saying it happens all the time, I'm just saying it happens. So, and I had a 30-minute meeting that I made run over, over an hour. And Longwell came in and I begged him, I begged anybody that would be there to take the operating out. You can't do that. So whatever happened, it went away. And, but the important part is that, is that at the 11th hour, when it was a DBO, you had two contractors, one which was a partnership and they could maybe, maybe do it, maybe not, they never had. And then you had one company that has done it many times and when you took the O out, they went away. That still concerns me. That's a long time ago. So anyway, how would you be able to just, I mean, there's, it's just, there's just too many variables, how much that would cost. And anyway, I know I'm past my time, but this is, this is the best of what could have come out of what you started several years ago. So I was always in on the, the fact that we needed a water plant. In fact, I'll just tell you while I'm standing here with my time expired, is when I was working on this, I went, also did some walkthroughs at the sewer plant and I know a little bit about this stuff. I thought you needed a sewer plant worse than you needed a water plant. So anyway, that's before you do. Anyway, thanks for your time.
Any further comments from the public? I see none. We'll bring it back to the bench. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. We've had a robust discussion about this. I, I think it comes down to, we would have had these costs at the front end or we'd have them now. And the previous councils decided, only one of us was here, we've had a great explanation from him why this decision was made. And so we have this decision now and truly it's an opportunity for us. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city of Wichita. This is the largest piece of infrastructure the city of Wichita has had in 156 years and it's too important to not get it right. We absolutely have to get it right because having water in our community is not discretionary. It's the most basic need that we have. It's an absolute necessity, not just for our residents, but a previous item we had in our agenda was talking about growing our economy. Having affordable water rates for our residents, especially our most vulnerable, is critical, but also if we do want to grow our economy and attract industry here. I know it's been said at least three times, but I'm going to say it four, this is not going to impact water rates, the decision that we're making today. And that was the, one of the most critical points for me in my decision-making. I do again want to thank staff, all the staff who is working on this. I know your plates are already full and we're adding to it with this incredible project, not to mention BNR. And that's why we need a consultant who has content expertise to come in and help us with the one-time operational standard proceeding, operating procedures, standard, standard procedures. I also want to thank the past council who voted on this. It was bold and visionary and forward-thinking for them to know that we needed this new piece of infrastructure to ensure the safety and growth of our community. I want to welcome our 10 to 11 new staff. Gary mentioned we're going to have 17 new staff, so welcome to the City of Wichita team and I know you'll really be a proud member of the public works staff. Want to thank OTS for being here today and helping be a part of the success. I am completely optimistic that when we do the ribbon cutting, we are going to celebrate the success of our new water treatment plant and I hope you will be there to celebrate with us. I'm going to be incredibly supportive today. Thank you.
Councilmember Glasscock.
Just a couple of brief comments. Obviously, there were questions about this project from the start and there was community doubt. I'm thankful that we're getting closer and closer to it and I think it's a good thing to talk about when the communities had doubts and concerns previously and address those. We're seven individuals and we're responsible for each one of our votes. We're not responsible for previous council votes or previous discussions. And so I think questions are a good thing. I'm thankful for the questions. I'm thankful for the discussion today. I will be supportive of this because it was budgeted, because it was allocated by a previous council and because of Gary's answer to my question of what happens if we don't move forward on this project as well. And thankful for the discussion and the questions asked today.
I see no further comments. I will just add a bit of context. I believe that it's important to restore trust in any organization, you have to give facts from the past. And I do believe that when you understand the context of why we are asking these questions, it helps the community understand that we are asking the questions you all have as well. So I understand the importance of water and the importance of our sewer system. These are the basic infrastructural components of the local government that we need to take care of. And with a major investment that is now going to be closer and closer to the half-a-billion dollars rather than $494, which I will now change to say $498 million, I believe that we need to be accurate in what we are sharing with community. And so questions that are asked from the bench are important because again, community needs to understand how we've arrived to this point in time. In addition to, these are seven individuals who again were not, minus one, who were, who were not part of a council that voted on this infrastructure component. And I am grateful that there was foresight in making an investment in infrastructure like our water system. But I believe that it's important to always give out all the facts and let people understand how those decisions have been, have come forward. And looking at all of our council meetings, which are all recorded on YouTube, you can always watch, you can always see the dialogue that has happened, whether it's the questions, the public comment, or the commentary that comes back from the bench. So again, I'm going to be supportive of this because I know that we do need to be prudent in moving forward with having the best water treatment plant that will get commissioned by April of 2025. And I appreciate the expertise of those with OTS that will help us get to that point in time, help us troubleshoot, have actual standard operating procedures moving forward so our entire public works staff understands that this is an asset in our community and we want to keep it not just for 100 years, but for however long this asset can be for our community. So again, thank you very much for answering all of our questions and allowing us to have that dialogue regarding some of the history and how we've come to this position in time. So with that, I will move that we approve the staff recommended action regarding this item.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Emergency rental assistance, ERA 2, funding allocation in agreement with United Way.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. I'm Sally Stang with the Housing and Community Services Department for the record. Today I have for you a funding agreement and funding allocation of ERA 2 funds to support the replacement of the homeless management information system managed by United Way of the Plains. Little background, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 included $21.55 billion in emergency rent assistance and housing stability funds administered by the Department of Treasury. By formula, the city of Wichita received just under, just over $9.2 million. But in addition, the city then received an additional 200, almost $240,000 in reallocated funds from underperforming jurisdictions. At least 75% of those funds had to be used for rent and utility assistance payments for eligible households. No more than 15% could be used for administration. No more than 10% used for housing stability services. And 50% of the funds were required to be obligated by March 31st, 2022 and all of the funds must be fully expended by September 30th, 2025. To date, the following has been expended, just over $8,648,000, representing 91.5% of the funding was expended for rent and utility expenses for eligible families and just over $350,000 was spent on administrative costs, representing only 3.7% of the funds. The remaining, just under $450,000, has been held strategically for persons seeking shelter and services for the 2024-25 emergency winter shelter, to provide housing stability and case management services, housing application fees, security deposits, and administrative The Coalition to End Homelessness in Wichita-Sedgway County is the homelessness continuum of care and it is coordinated through the United Way of the Plains. And in that role, they're responsible for COC planning, coordinated entry, which is how people enter into the ecosystem, point and time count, coordinated, they coordinate the local competition for COC funding, they manage the homeless management information system, and they are funded through grants from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The current software used for our homelessness management information system is called Client Track and it's from Akovia and it lacks features to improve communication, coordination, service, and transparency. And the Coalition Board voted to replace the software with BitFocus from Clarity in mid-2025 and without its identification card function or equipment. You know, as we work so hard to move into, move our homelessness response into the 21st century, we need software that helps us do that. And the advantages of BitFocus are that it provides for geolocation and encampment tracking. This was really a request from the homelessness task force, a better way for them to be able to identify where encampments are found and how we can deploy outreach workers to those encampments. So that will help to include that communication with those conducting outreach. It will convert that data into visualizations for dashboards. I've been wanting dashboards since the day I got here. It allows for data tracking for our functional zero criteria. We're all striving for functional zero and the poor folks at, at United Way have been having to crunch raw data and apply it into criteria set through community solutions to determine if we've met that. This solution will actually do that for us. It'll allow us to share, enter into data sharing agreements with the balance of state COC, which actually covers every other county that surrounds Sedgway County. And as we try to identify where people are coming and going, where they're from, that will help us in that endeavor. And then this system also allows for the printing of identification cards. The Coalition is unable to fund the conversion until mid-2025 and they, and they were planning to launch it without the identification function and equipment. By providing ERA 2 administrative funds now, this allows the software conversion to occur in late 2024 to align with the next emergency winter shelter and facilitates the use of identification cards to track shelter entrances and exits for better and timely data. And this could also potentially be the first step towards municipal IDs. The funding is exempt of any match requirements. There are, there is no impact to the general fund. All future licensure and, and software management will be covered by the COC funds from HUD. And the HMIS sophomore replacement is an eligible expense under the ERA 2 administrative funding. The Law Department has reviewed and approved the sub-reception agreement as to form and it is recommended that the City Council approve the emergency rental assistance program, ERA 2 administrative funding allocation of $64,026.50, the funding agreement with the United Way and authorized with necessary signatures. And I stand for any questions. We also have Matt Lowe, Steve Burt, and Angie Prather from United Way of the Plains here today who could answer any further technical questions.
Sally, I have one question for you regarding the municipal ID. With this capacity of this new software, would that allow, and have we talked to law about the possibility of this actually being the municipal ID?
That would be definitely the next step. The, the IDs are, are critical for us to be able to track at this, at the shelter and other activities in the homelessness ecosystem. It very well could be that first step and we would have to evaluate it further.
Councilmember Johnston.
Sally, thank you for the great work you do. Appreciate it. Also thank you, United Way, COC, for the great work you do. This is an important piece to the whole puzzle of, of the MAC. This is an important piece to the whole puzzle of the MAC and homelessness, and really solving or addressing that issue in a comprehensive way. So it's very, very important, and it's also, Jeff Flores, it's very important for economic development, too, so I think we need to remember that. Thank you for your great work, I appreciate it.
May I have Matt with United Way come forward and just share, again, why this specific software is the one that you all are advocating for?
Yes, ma'am. So we've, we've looked at, from the time that I've been working with homeless services, we've had Client Track, and it has met a functional need. Like, it does allow us to enter data, and we can run some reports, but we have found a lot of difficulties when it comes to any type of data upgrades. Like, whenever HUD initiates a data upgrade, Client Track is often behind, pushing us further behind in getting the information out that we need, i.e. point and time count, some of the delays with getting that information out, it's very delayed. When we really got into this thing, we, when we did our last point and time count, I'm just going to use this as an example, we saw an increase in unsheltered homeless people, correct? And we've seen that over the last couple of years. We have done a lot of research, and what can we do to do more outreach and integrate that within our HMIS database? The current software that we have does not allow for that, it does not have any kind of mapping, so whenever people are going out and doing outreach, they're literally, you know, they're making contact with people, but there's not a client account for them to put any kind of data into, in our current HMIS system. So that's a problem. So we were looking outside of that, I believe the homeless outreach team was as well, at an additional software that would complement the current HMIS system. That was going to be an additional, I believe it was $70,000 or something like that, it was an astronomical amount to do that. So when we were researching HMIS systems, and we came across this Clarity BitFocus, who had a mapping system where you can literally go in and at a corner, just put a little dot, and it would pull up, and you could say, "Red Tent," you know, Jimmy, and you could put a little note, you know, with a blue hat and a yellow jacket, and we would kind of, you know, and everybody could see that, and everybody could share that. The homeless outreach team could see it, they could put notes in it, other outreach workers could see it and put notes in it, and we could begin to really better serve people who are unsheltered. That was a major selling point in this. Again, the data sharing across the state was really, really important, because we see as a transient population, people are not just, they're coming to Wichita from other places, they're going other places from Wichita, and we want to really be able to have that ability to communicate across the state as much as possible. And the functional zero, the Balance for States Continuum of Care already is contracted statewide with the Built for Zero people who operate the functional zero language. And so they've already developed dashboards where we can run data, and they understand the functional zero language. When we talk to our current vendors, they don't even have really a concept of what that is. So again, while I don't want to throw any shade on Client Track, they've been a good software company for us through the years, it's time for us to level up. If we're going, if we keep doing what we've always done, we're always, we're going to get what we've always got, right? And we talk about, we want to move the needle on ending homelessness in our community. In order to do that, we've got to level up. And this is that leveling up with a top-notch, much better software that will enable us to do the work that we want to do, enable more providers to be able to utilize the software, to track data, to communicate across programs, across services, and that ability to print the ID cards was just an added bonus. So when people go into shelter, rather than having to write their name down on a piece of paper that a staff member has to go in later and input the data, they can just scan their card and go right in. They could go for a meal, they can just scan their card and get their meal. So it allows for a lot better utilization across the board.
Thank you very much, Matt. It's the data that's getting me. I really appreciate that this is very data-focused. We need all providers to be utilizing the HMIS system, and with an investment on a new upgraded software, hopefully much more user-friendly, this will allow for all providers who are already giving services to those of our, in our community facing homelessness, to have the same data moving forward.
Yes, and one thing I did not mention was when we look at our coordinated by-name list currently with our current software, you would do an enrollment such at a shelter, but you would have to do another enrollment, which is a whole nother dataset, to put a person on that by-name list. With the new software, it's as simple as just checking a box, and so you can keep it moving, which means we have more people on our by-name list and able to better serve those people.
Thank you, Matt.
Sure.
I see no further questions. We will now open it up for public comment. Are there any individuals who would like to speak on this specific matter? I see none, we'll bring it back to the bench. With that, I will move to approve the Emergency Rental Assistance ERA 2 Funding Allocation and Funding Agreement. Oh, sorry, that was my, approve that recommendation. Motion to approve. Okay, a second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Approval of travel for Councilmember Tuttle to attend the National League of Cities Childcare Initiative in Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, August 5 through 6, 2024.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I just want to point out there will be no cost to the city for this travel. This is part of the National League of Cities Entrepreneurial Childcare Project. Just to let the community know, we were one of seven cities across the nation to be selected to be on a work group, task force, if you will, to talk about childcare, and especially how it relates to entrepreneurialism. We'll be meeting with childcare advocates from Oklahoma City who have had some demonstrated successes that we'd like to see if we can emulate, and then also with representatives from the state of Oklahoma, who also were able to pass some legislation to make childcare workforce stronger. So we have four goals for this project, and it will be addressing at least two of them. And I will be traveling with representatives from Child Start and also the Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas. So when I get back, I'll be happy to share, hopefully, our tremendous learnings with everyone, and then also we're excited because they also want to learn from us and some of the efforts that we've made here in Wichita and also in Kansas regarding childcare. Thank you.
I motion to approve the travel for Councilmember Tuttle.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
Are there any Councilmember appointments at this time? I have one. This is not from myself, but I will motion to provide this name at the recommendation of the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission for the Sustainability Integration Board. We're appointing Cindy Miles for that position. Any other appointments? I see none. I motion to approve that appointment.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. It is now time for Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to thank my colleagues for reminding me that I am the only council member that's been here since 2018, and I now have four more gray hairs in my head, so just want to thank you all for that reminder.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the public know this Saturday, and Plainview, at the Colvin Center at 6:00 PM, we will be doing the second Unity in the Community Rally. We've worked with the Ministerial League and other advocates for peace and justice around our community. We will start the march around 6 o'clock, and afterwards, sorry, there will be a rally with hot dogs and some games for the kids, and a good time, and then just a chance to really see what resources we have in our community to help keep children off the streets and out of violence, and also what resources we have to help families who need assistance as well. So please come out and support. It's always good to get your steps in on a march. It's going to be a little warm, but we will have shade, so hope to see you guys out there.
Vice Mayor Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two ribbon cuttings on Friday, and I'm very excited about them. The first one is at Millwood Park, the new designated Delano Park, so I would encourage anyone to join us for that. And then, this is so cool, the same organization where you can rent the kayaks over by Riverside Park, or Riverside Tennis Center, in Central Riverside Park, they're going to have ping-pong tables and cornhole, where you can pay a small fee to play ping pong and cornhole in the park. So, see you guys on Friday.
One quick correction, Madam Vice Mayor. Do you mean Poetry Park?
No, it's Millwood Park.
Is that what the sign says?
Mayor, we're done with comments.
I thank you for the comments, but now we're going to move to something else. Before we end our meeting, we actually have an executive session, so I will read two different motions, and I will need approval for each of them. I will start off with the first one. I move that the City Council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to review finalists for municipal court judge positions pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1 to discuss personnel matters for non-elected personnel. The executive session is required to protect the privacy interests of an identifiable individual. So I have a motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? Oh, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. What time?
I'll do this immediately after the next one.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0. There's one more. I move that the City Council recess into executive session for 10 minutes to receive information on a civil case pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for legal advice. The executive session is required to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? The discussion would be, this is going to be in concurrence with this first one, so 40 minutes in total, and right now it's 11:24, we'll say 11:30, so we can take a break. So at 12:10, we will return from executive session. Motion and a second, any further discussion? I see none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Motion passes 7-0, we will return from executive session at 12:10. Thank you.